Time is 12:30. We're going to come back into our work session, starting off with our presentation. With Nick Brown for the 2020 Census. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. I want to thank you all for having me here today. I appreciate it. I wish Melanie were here because she was very enthusiastic to get me down here and I really appreciate it. So I'll send her a thank you email, but please thank her for me because it was by far the best response I've had from anyone that I reached out to. And I am responsible for 20 counties in the state of Oregon currently. So to begin, I just want to say, while I am here and I represent the federal government, and I'm also an Oregonian. Born in Climb Falls, I live in central Oregon. My wife and I have a home there. I chose to do this job because I think it's important to make sure that everyone counts. And that's what the Census does. Census counts everybody, literally. And so the reason that we do the decennial census is because it's in the Constitution. It is Article One, Section Two. And it says, it basically says that after three years of the first Congress convening, everybody would be counted every 10 years. And the reason that we do that is for a lot of different reasons. Number one, it is apportionment of our congressional seats. There are 435 congressional seats and each state gets a different number depending on the population. So it is really important that we get a complete and accurate count. Lakeview, actually, from the numbers that I was able to get, has six more people now than it did in the 2010 Census. That's from Portland State's estimated projections. I don't know if new family moved in or some babies were born. But Lake County in general has about 220 more people living here, according to the numbers I was able to find, which is a combination of Census data from 2010 and certified projections from Portland State University.
So is that every person or is it voting age?
That's everybody. The total population has risen from 7,895 in 2010 to an estimated 8,115 in 2018. Now, while that doesn't, may not seem like a significant growth in population, there is a study, which is in your packet, done by George Washington University, that showed that Oregon received roughly $10 billion in federal funding. And that in that year, it was $675 billion total in federal funding that would be distributed throughout the states. It also trickles down through the counties and cities, et cetera. And so Oregon received about $2 million of that, which meant that every person in the state of Oregon was worth roughly $2,500. So even though it may not seem like 120 people is a lot of growth, when you take 120 and you multiply it by 2,500, we're talking about millions of dollars a year over the course of 10 years. Because the data collected by the Census and given to other branches of the government is what is going to decide the percentage of the pie you get over those next 10 years. And so it doesn't really matter if the money's $10 million or $10 billion, or if it's $6 billion or $20 billion. You're going to get the percentage of whatever is available through those programs. And on that sheet, it lists some of the programs that are used, whether it be SNAP, road construction, things like that, things that help our infrastructure, all of those things are part of this federal funding that the statistical data that's collected by the Census is used for. It can also be used at the county level, at the city level. And there are tools that the Census has that are available to you that you can use to help make decisions based on the different data that we gather. There's a packet in there for a tool we have called Rome. So if you went to census.gov/Rome, you could look and it'll show you actual census tracts. Lake County has two census tracts. And those census tracts, it'll give you the information on how many people are in those tracts. Also, age ranges, there's tons of information you can pull out of there, which can help in planning for the county based on different growth in areas or different needs based on languages that people may use in a certain area or anything like that. It also shows us what the Census calls a low response score. I am not a statistician and I'm not exactly sure how we come by that number, but it says that it is expected that basically 20% of Lake County is not going to respond to the Census. So if you take 20% of 8,000, just to do it easy, that's going to be roughly 1,600 people that won't respond. So when they don't respond, we'll do what we call a non-response follow-up and we'll try to get back to them, whether it's through the mail. Sometimes we actually have to send people to doors in order to get those things to happen. And all of that costs us more money. And the goal of the Census now is to return as much money back to Washington as we can when we're done. There's, we're changing the way that the Census is done in the 2020 Census a little bit because now people can respond via the internet. We're hoping that 45% of respondents will be via the internet because it's kind of the first go-out. You can also respond by phone and you can still respond by the mail. About 95% of the population will be contacted via the mail. 5% can't be. And so some of those, some of the reasons for that is because maybe they have a P.O. box and we don't send our questionnaires to P.O. boxes. And the reason for that is because people move, P.O. boxes don't. We have different programs. There's a timeline that kind of shows what we're doing and when we're doing it. And so we're going to start in August, what we call address canvassing. In 2010, we did 100% address canvassing, which means we sent people out to try and find every address in the United States. That's every domicile where somebody lives. We do not have the same budget in 2020. So we're going to do 30% as kind of, you know, an opportunity to go out and make sure everything's still good. I would guess that someone from the county and the city of Lakeview and other towns here should have been contacted in 2018 by the Census to do what's called LUCA, which is a local update on addresses where we provide information. It's the one time that we provide information on our addresses that we have to local governments so they can say like, yeah, this is right, now we need to add this, you know, maybe there's a new subdivision or something like that. So some of the address adjustments should have already been done. But we also have to contact people, or we have to count people who are homeless. We have to count people who are in what we call group quarters, which would be prison. College campus is also a group quarter because people will live there in dormitories or maybe off-campus housing or something like that. But these are people who are there for periods of time who may leave. And so it's important that we get to those people. That's part of what our operations do. And group quarters should have already been contacted as well. And that'll be done before actual Census Day, which is April 1st, 2020. We have 10 definite questions on the Census, possibly 11. One of them is in front of the Supreme Court. That is the citizenship question. I don't know if it'll be on or not. We are proceeding as if it is right now. There are reasons that we ask all of these questions. And some of those reasons are pretty easy for me to tell you. Like, why do we count everyone? Well, I already told you that. We ask for everybody's name to ensure that we get everybody who's in a home. We ask the question on whether people are Hispanic or Latino. And I've had people ask me, well, why do you specify Hispanic and Latinos? Well, it's because often Hispanic and Latinos don't classify themselves under one race. And we have a large population of Hispanic and Latino people in the United States. But you will just find it more often where there will be combinations of white, white and black, white and anything else than you do other segments of the population. And we collect that information to make sure that those people are provided with equal opportunity and different programs that the government uses. And again, the Census collects the data, but it's other people who use the data in that way. Another big concern that we've had is obviously the citizenship question because there's fear that people won't respond if they have to say, am I a citizen or not? And the fear from that comes from, is this information going to be turned over to some law enforcement agency who's going to show up at my house? The Census only reports purely statistical data. We do not give out addresses. We do not give out names, any of that. It doesn't happen. It has stood up from the Freedom of Information Act that we won't give out addresses. Someone tried to use the Patriot Act to access Census data and it was all denied. A rebuttal for that is often that during World War II, Census data was used to inter-Japanese Americans. You can look it up on the internet and you will find out it is true that that did happen. However, in 1954, Title 13 was enacted, which prevents any of that data from being given to anyone. I had to swear an oath when I took my position. It's very similar to the one that I did when I was in the Army, except it said that I will never release any of this data to anyone for as long as I live. And if I do, under Title 13, I can face five years in prison and a $250,000 fine. It is also a promise, and not just a promise, but the law, that the Census will not release that data for 72 years. After 72 years, the data will be released. There are a lot of steps that the Census takes to protect that data as well. I know that one thing they do is they will switch half of the information from one city. So like, the city of about 2,000, Lakeview, maybe they'll take a city of 2,000 from the Midwest after the statistics are reported and they'll switch half the data because it helps protect people in the future. They are constantly going about and trying to find new ways to protect the data. And to this point, the data has never been breached from the Census Bureau. So when we say that we take it seriously that we're going to protect this data and we're not going to turn it over to other people, we mean it. Also, people often ask about, what if I don't answer a question? What if I answer part of it? What if I don't answer all of it? Will I still be counted? Yes, you'll still be counted. Yes, we will also come back and follow up with you. And that information may be obtained by, if you don't want to answer, talking to your neighbor, physically looking at someone, if an numerator goes out and you can see some of those things, they might take some of that information on their own. There's also some records showing that other entities will do with us that we won't do with them that'll help us gather that information in order to try and fill those arms up. To gather this information, we're going to be hiring enumerators from every county in the United States. Currently, we're looking for, I think, about 100 applicants in Lake County. They can apply at 2020census.gov. I ran out of color paint, so I don't have flyers for you. But if it's, if anybody would like them, I could certainly send copies of them. I have PDF copies that I could send if that's something people would be interested in. The job will pay $14.50 to $16.00 an hour here in Lake County. And enumerators are the Census taker. They'll also go out for our address canvassing in August. So the thought is, while I don't have specific dates, the thought is start to train in the middle of summer, start to go out and address canvas in August and be used as needed. And then more people will be added probably when we're doing non-response follow-up, which will happen in May after April of 2020. And we don't know exactly how many people will need that because it's going to be dependent on how many people respond. Also, on our questionnaire for the internet self-response, there's 12 languages. There's also 59, it's cards that can be used to help translate different things so that people can make sure that they can get through all the questions. And there will be 12 different languages available over the phone too. And I've provided you information in your packets with that as well. So the reason that I'm here, the thing that I am here to ask you for, and I am here to ask you for something, is while I can say, based on the data we've collected, that 20% of the people might not respond, I don't know exactly who those people are and I don't know exactly where those people are. I don't live in Lake County. So we like to use the term complete count committee. We're trying to form committees and I'm speaking with every local government in my 20 counties that I can in order to get people on board to create these complete count committees. And the reason for that is to get people from different areas together who can say, all right, we're going to get out and educate people on the Census and that they need to reply. And so that could be, and so, and the reason I'm here specifically is this is the largest governing body in Lake County and you are the elected officials. And so if you say that it's worth doing, then that means somebody's going to do it because you have the authority to do that. So while I don't necessarily need you to be on the committee, I do need you to make sure that it gets done. Now, this is a choice. You don't have to do it. This, this is, this is your, your building. This is your, you know, place of work. I'm not here to tell you what to do. But this is one of those things where I feel like I'm an advocate for you, even though I work for the federal government. I'm often not viewed that way because I worked for the federal government. And so, you know, like I said, all the money that can potentially be trickled down into the county or the towns and cities, you know, all across the country, you stand out to lose out on that if the county isn't there. We have different programs for schools. Like, we have a program called Statistics in Schools where there are different lesson plans that a teacher can incorporate to help teach, you know. And so, so for example, if we had this complete count committee, we might want somebody from the school district on so they can talk to teachers about maybe implementing these things because people who speak English or a second language are one of our hard-to-count populations. But a lot of the times, those people use their kids to determine whether they're translators or as the people that they trust in the community to talk to other people and to get the information they want. So if we can potentially get the information in the schools, then these kids can go home and be like, no, Mom and Dad, we need to do this. We need to make sure that we count everybody in our house. And if we have that stuff out there, we can convince them, hopefully, that it's safe for them to do it. Same thing goes with people with P.O. boxes. This is a very large rural county. I am sure there are a lot of people who don't have mailboxes here. But how do we get to them and let them know that they need to be a part of the Census? And while it seems like, you know, it's our civic duty and it's in the Constitution and so everybody should just do it, I was speaking with the executive assistant from another county who told me she would probably throw the Census away. And then I told her it was constitutionally mandated and she said, oh, I guess I'll do it. The information just isn't out there like we'd like it to be. That's basically, that's why, that's where I am. That's why I'm here. You know, we're really looking to make partnerships between, you know, the Census Bureau and local governments and local community-based organizations. And, you know, as time goes on, you know, I've got, I've still got a year until the Census gets here. I, you know, I really want to be able to reach out to different places, you know, in Lake County. But I also have a lot of counties that I deal with. And counties seem to only want me on Wednesdays and Tuesdays, but Wednesday's really the big one. So I've got like every Wednesday until May 8th, I'm meeting with a different county right now. So, but that's basically my presentation. So if you have any questions, please feel free.
So Mark, did you have anything?
Go ahead and then I'll...
Sure. Are you looking for an actual committee then in different places in the county to, you know, different groups of people? How exactly do you, do you see that structure? Of trying to get a group of people in different spots of our very large county?
Yes.
That can bring in, or at least have connections with different portions of the population?
Well...
How do you see that?
How, well, yeah. You know, some of that's tough because, you know, I know I was driving through here and I didn't have cell phone service. And which is much like where I grew up in rural Oregon, where my parents still don't get cell phone service.
You were driving by my place.
Right, yeah, I did. And so I, whatever way that we can get people together or represent or, you know, whatever way we can identify those things, you know, whether it be if somebody can send out an email, you know, like if somebody here knows that, you know, somebody up in Silverlake's going to be real hard to reach or a group of people or something like that, or, you know, I drove, is it somewhere like that and I drove through as well? Silverlake has, you know, 250 people. Well, maybe it won't be the best thing to get somebody from Silverlake to drive down here, but I'm not looking for somebody to meet every week either. You know, and right now, we're still a long ways out. So we may want to push, but what I need is people who know the community and understand the community to get together to kind of create some ideas for ways that we can make sure we reach everybody. So whether, I would assume that they're Lake County fair. I haven't been to it personally, but you know, maybe I can be there. Maybe I can get one of my RAs, my recruiting assistants, you know, to be there to talk to people, have a booth, to do something like that.
Yeah, we have, we have our bear right here and we're coming up on our 100th year centennial.
Right, and that'd be, you know, that could be an excellent opportunity to have someone from the Census there to make sure that we're getting the information out to as many people as possible, get the biggest reach we can. And so really, the first thing that I need is for someone to be my contact here that I can talk to about a complete count committee, how we can get it together, who they think might be the best people to be on the committee. And then I have a sample work plan. It's in the back on the right side. And it basically says, you know, it's got chairs. So these are the chairs of the committee. These are our members. And it gives us some idea of how often we want to meet, maybe these times. And the meetings can be in person, the meetings can be over the phone, you know, if possible. It's based on whoever's in the committee, whoever wants to do it. I will do everything I can to answer questions for and give some guidance to the committee. I can't be on the committee. I would be stretched way too thin. And it's not a lack of interest.
No, no, no.
But it is what it is. We cannot pay people to be on the committee also.
So it's all volunteer?
It is volunteer, absolutely. And like I said, it's, I'm, I'm here to convince everyone this is in their own best interest.
But you do pay the enumerators?
The enumerators are absolutely paid, yeah. They'll be employees of the Census Bureau, yeah, for sure. So this is, and I've had people confused and thinking that we're asking the counties to like, conduct the Census for us. No, that's not it. We're just trying to make sure, sure that everyone knows that they need to take part because we really want it to be everyone. And there's a lot of incentive behind that for us in Oregon. And especially me, I keep that here. I had another partnership specialist tell me a story. He met with a mayor from another city. And he said, the mayor said, some things never change. But they had noticed that their sewer usage rate had gone way up in the town. And so it must have meant more people lived there. They had a complete count committee. They, you know, worked to figure out what was going on and reach as many people as they could. And they had 800 people more that lived in that town than they expected. 800 people turns out to be a heck of a lot of money. And so, you know, that's the thing is like, we've got to exhaust the avenues that we can to make sure that we find that people are hard to count. And so, yeah, so like I said, I'll do whatever I can in order to help get it on track, get it going, and get people pointed in the right direction. But the truth of the matter is, you know, is if you get somebody and they'll be like, you know, they'll come up with a million better ideas than I ever would, but they know what to do here, they know the art.
Well, so along, along the lines again about the P.O. boxes. So, so when people are required to have a post office box, there's not a delivery service to their rural address. What exactly is the Census process to collect the data?
Well, we have a thing that's called update leave. And so with real rural addresses, we will send people out to the address. We will leave papers, paperwork. However, we can, those people can call in and so...
So will you put something in their post office box that says call in?
We will not put something in the post office box, which is part of why, so let's say that, because people have the post office box to different places sometimes.
Right.
So like, let's say they have it at the post office, which I used to work at, so I shouldn't be so awkward to be called with. But, so let's say that they had, have their thing at the post office. So we put a flyer that says 2020 Census next to all the post office boxes so that they can see it. So, and I can provide that kind of stuff, you know, to whoever's on the committee. But, but that's the thing, and so we need to get it out there because the update leave, like I've got this map that I can go to online that's on the Census, which actually anybody can go to it. But it's called T, it's Type of Enumeration, something. And so it shows like a lot of Western Idaho and stuff like that is going to be updated where they go out. And it's a really big thing in Alaska. Like, we will have people who will go out, because there are some places in Alaska you can only reach online. And so, you know, we'll do very specific things to try and make sure that they reach these communities and stuff like that. But right now, it's just do whatever I can to make sure that we get the information to those people so that they can make the phone call, they can respond online, you know, on whatever phone that they can.
I mean, think about people responding online in our rural part of Lake County. They can't.
No, and I understand that.
Okay, so back to, and then when you, you say you're sending enumerators. Your goal, though, is what percentage, 30%?
No.
Of our, okay, so what's the goal of our rural addresses that you will send someone door to door to?
Well, no, that, okay, so that's, so that is for address canvassing. So that's the 30%. That is just 30% of addresses across the United States. We're going to send enumerators out and make sure those addresses are correct. I do not know how that's decided. Unfortunately, I'm not in operations, I'm in partnership. And so there are some of those things that I just, I don't have a real information on how that works. So, and as far as the rural addresses go, I know that that will be addressed, one, by trying to get the information out in whatever way we can, because like I said, they can respond by phone too. And there's potential to do things like have a place where they can come out and fill out the Census.
Right. You guys seeing why a complete count committee is going to be beneficial for us?
Yeah, yeah, no, we see it. I think I'm trying to figure out exactly how we can actually implement something to get 100% of our population and actually record them. So the enumerators, now how many, do you have enumerators that you've used in the past that live here? Do you hire locally or do you bring?
Okay, so there's probably somebody who lives here who's enumerated before.
Sure.
I, I, right. But we do hire locally. So for example, when I was, I was a partnership specialist, I was hired because I lived in Deschues County. Because I didn't realize I was going to get two thirds of the state at the time. I thought it was going to work in Deschues County. But part of the reason is, is because it'll be a lot more favorable if you're speaking to me from Oregon rather than some guy or woman who works for the government from DC. That's, that's part of the idea behind it, is all we better receive. Same thing with our enumerators. If we have people go out and check in addresses, if we have people who are going out for non-response follow-up for the people who don't respond, who we're going to send out. So at some point, if they don't respond, we are going to send people out there. That's the idea. So non-response follow-up will happen in May. And it'll last as long as it needs to last before December 31st to 2020. Because on December 20, or December 31st, 2020, the report goes on the president's desk.
And that's after you double-checked from that address list update that you requested?
Well, right, but we, we have a larger address list in general that's created. Like, there's a master list of, that the Census keeps. It's supposed to be like every address in the United States. And so they know people are there and they will do what is necessary to get to them if they don't respond initially. But we're trying, the reason I, or the reason I exist is to, where am I? There's basis, is to make sure that everybody answers the first time because it just costs us more money to send somebody out. And so we want to try and limit that as much as possible.
Right.
Because it's for all of us.
Right. Because you, yeah, and then again, statistically, you know you're not going to get 100% response. So at some point in time, they go, oh, for Lake County, we got whatever percent response, that might be okay. So that's where we want to...
Well, we have statisticians, you know, who are back in Maryland at the headquarters who, you know, work very hard to track a lot of this stuff too. And, but, you know, unless you're here, you can't quantify some of the growth that happens and things like that. And so, you know, we need to make sure. And again, so for the enumerators, so if we're going to have people doing non-response follow-up, going out to people's houses, you know, they need to be able to say, you know, hey, I'm Susan, I live in Lakeview. You know, or, you know, I'm not some weirdo here. I work for the Census, they'll have badges, they'll have... There'll be little iPads, it's gonna be done on iPads. I have no idea how that's gonna work in rural areas, I haven't seen it. But, but so...
They can report back to the FCC our broadband capabilities out here.
That's true.
No, it doesn't, I, I live in Deschutes County. So while I live in Redmond, and Redmond might have, you know, thirty thousand more people than Lakeview does, there's a lot in Deschutes County that doesn't have anybody in it. And so I, and I grew up in a place called Platina, California. And its population's sixty. And I didn't live in Platina, I lived ten miles from Platina. So I know rural, you know, my, my parents still, they have some weird satellite internet that's terrible. And I don't ever remember filling out a census as a kid.
So you probably know too, the biggest problem is the mindset that we have here. And when the federal government is moving the information on me, there's, there's that twenty, there's fifty percent at least.
I'm amazed that you will be, that you only, you know, couldn't count twenty, thirty percent of this county.
I'll bet your money, I'll bet your money twenty percent is way underestimating.
I would also probably say that that twenty percent, if that is accurate, they're probably not necessarily people that were, you know, just not listening to their kids that were coming home from school telling them that they needed to...
Oh, no, they're absolutely people who just choose not to respond.
Yeah, they're the hermit guys.
And like, we have, we have one of those...
Yeah, they might not.
Communities that, I don't think I, I'm gonna be honest, I don't think I did.
You're not gonna get a hundred percent more likely than I...
That's, that's the thing.
Just 'cause I don't want the federal government to have...
Do you have a social security number?
Yeah. There's people out here that don't.
But I mean...
But, but, no, I mean, they have the information.
I'm, I'm just being real with you, that...
But we have to advocate that people knew this.
I, I understand that, but one of, how do you get past this? Because you have told me that. I mean...
Okay, well...
And I'm one of those guys that I'm not gonna freely give information to the feds because it's a good thing. You haven't proved it to me.
I, I, sorry, I'm just... I, I have people who, who I've talked to in different counties who told me, well, at least you're not in the force service. Like, that's... So, so I, I do understand. And I mean, and we're gonna be going around, and that'll be personally, because we have tribal specialists, who are gonna be going and asking the tribal people of our country, or, you know, our, our native people to give the same information. And you tell me who is more distrustful of the federal government than them. So it's the same ask, right? And, and so I, if you don't do it, if you choose not to participate, it really isn't going to affect me. I mean, in the overall sense, it will, but, and there are some things we're not supposed to talk about, like apportionment. But, you know, as populations grow, and Oregon's population is growing, things can happen as a result of that. Things that give Oregon more power in our country, right? And if a bunch of people, and I know the state of California is really worried about a lot of non-citizens not answering. And what happens if California comes back, it's having a bunch less people? Well, that apportionment comes into play, right? But if Lake County isn't properly counted, it's going to affect the federal funding that Lake County gets. And while it may not affect you personally, I mean, it will. Because, you know, roads are maintained through that money. Our infrastructure is maintained through getting that money. Although, your county commissioners, so, I mean, you should be able to tell me how that money gets used too. And, and so, you know, would you rather have twenty percent less? Do you think that'd be a good thing?
No, no, but what I'm trying to say is, is Howard, that's how you need to sell it to the people here, is...
That's why I'm here talking to you though. Because everybody else might not listen to me. But Mark Albertson, who they voted into office, they'll listen to him because they trust you. And that's why I'm here talking to you. Is to convince you to trust me enough to where you'll go out and give this message to the people who live here. That's, I mean, that's why we're here. That's why we're meeting. I mean, we need with state, local government, and we, you know, we even meet amongst the federal government, with, you know, senators and congressmen to try and get the word out in whatever way we can because people don't trust the federal government, absolutely.
Probably more so than ever, you know, than, than before.
Yes.
But, you know, you make a good argument actually in terms of, you know, like you were saying with the one lady who said, I'm gonna throw this in the trash, but you said it's constitutional that we do this. And then she says, oh, well, maybe I'll fill it out. And that's actually an excellent argument to use in this county.
Well, right, I saw the Bill of Rights in, in the preamble of the Constitution on the wall before I walked in here. And I, and I said to myself, okay, good. Like, it, because not everybody has that, you know, in, in their town or house.
I can read, I can read...
You know, where it's, where it's perfectly easy to see, you know. And, and so, I knew that, you know, this is, yeah, they stopped teaching civics in high schools all over the country. But this is a way for you to take part in democracy in our country. This is how we determine, like I said, how Congress is divvied up, how federal funding gets split. You know, this is a part, and, and this is also the biggest mobilization of the American people outside of war. So, you know, by people applying and doing things like that, this is really a way for people to take part in the American experience. And, and, you know, and, and this is part of the way, the information that we collect is part of the way we create our more perfect union. And, and like I said, like, I have a personal interest in this. I chose to do this. I'm a full-time student and a full-time employee of the Census Bureau. And I was perfectly happy going to school, using my military benefits. But I saw this come along and I thought, no, this is a way I can go out and I can make a difference. And I, I had a commissioner from Plymouth Falls last week say the same thing to me. I don't like that you're collecting this data on me. I understand. I do. I understand, I am also a person. But...
I have no idea who that would be.
This, this information, first, I mean, you have a social security number? Yeah, I mean, you're, I mean, if you're born in the United States, this information's collected. You know, I, I mean, this, this information already exists really on you. You know, the federal government has it. We're not asking for your social security number, we're not asking for your credit card number. I mean, really, you get as much information every time you order a pizza as, you know, anything we're asking for. I mean, think about it.
Yeah, but what I was trying, and you've explained some of it. But, and, and that's how you have to do it for people like me. Is, you know, it's gotta be a benefit for the community, for your country.
Well, it's different because everybody has different motivations. And so my job is to find out what your motivation is and to get, it, I was, I was telling my wife the other day. I said, I feel like I'm a lobbyist. But I'm a lobbyist for the people I'm going to meet, but they think I'm earning them. And, and, and it's, and so I have, like I said, I have to convince you to do what's in your own best interest against your wishes a lot of time. And so I just, I, I'm really trying to get across the fact that this is important. Like, and, and it matters because it matters to you personally. Everyone in this room has a stake in this, whether you realize it or not. Anything else? I was good?
Well, you know, we're trying to...
I think you did great. This is available on recording, so if you need to get access...
Oh, yeah, it's all on YouTube.
See, up until I poked the bear, I wasn't sold of the last part of it. You didn't? Good.
Well, I, yeah. Funny, we had a training we had to go do in Los Angeles. And we had to stand up and do a mini presentation in front of everybody. And they were like, your face was the same the whole time. And I was like, well, I don't, I don't just smile all the time. And they're like, well, use it, you know. They're like, you know, you really need to get the passion in there. I appreciate, I appreciate you doing this.
I really appreciate you being here, you know, and honestly, whatever we do with public, I really appreciate Melanie making it possible for you to be here today. And it's, we're working really hard on trying to get accurate numbers on a lot of things that we have going on in our county. And just, you know, whether it's drug issues or, or whatever else. And not knowing what our actual numbers are causes problems there as well. When you start to look at percentiles and how we compare to the rest of the state, when you compare the amount of people that we know we have on drugs or suffering from mental illness or whatever it might be, and then you compare that to a low population, the percentages compared to the rest of the state go way up. And we don't look so good. But, and I would, I would very much like to know what our actual numbers are. And did you have something?
Well, I would just add on the funding, this doesn't affect just federal funding.
Sure.
It affects state funding too, all of our state per capita funding. So it is...
And districting.
Yes, it's very, I guess I can't stress about how important this is to get good and accurate.
And so districting is very important too. Where are we at other ways in Washington, D.C.?
Well, we have...
Well, in the state as well. Because the state, the state congress lines and the state senate, you know, that's decided from this information too. After this information is given to the president, it will be given to the states. And, you know, depending on how the, the state works, like, I know North Carolina, their lines are gonna be drawn pretty differently after this next census. Or census based on some of the, the party things that are happening. And I, I'm apolitical from eight a.m. to four thirty p.m., just so you know. So that wasn't a political statement, but I, you know, if, if you follow the news, you can see that these things are gonna change. And, and so it, it's important, it's important. I mean, you know, I, I live in a county that's grown by thirty thousand people. It's, it's really, you know, like, who knows? We could end up with another state congressman up there, you know, but, and so it's like, well...
It would probably be ours too, to be honest.
Well, you, I mean, I don't know if we'd have the numbers to justify another congressman, but the fact is, you make an excellent point. The fact is, if our numbers went up and we actually had a lot more people than we thought, we're nonpartisan, this is a nonpartisan office, just for the record. But we wanna make sure that the...
It's in Deschutes County.
Yeah, yeah, I, I am aware of that. But we wanna make sure that the people out here, especially in this part of Oregon, have the representation that they deserve. And so if our numbers are actually higher or, or whatever they may be, we wanna make sure that they're getting their, their equal and fair representation, so. Now, I'd, I'd like to know more exactly, just, I mean, I, I thank you for what you've done so far, what you've presented to us, but I think I'd love to have more conversations in the future and to stay in touch.
Absolutely.
Are you looking for a decision from us today as far as a liaison or someone to speak to? Or someone to contact?
You can, you can, I mean, you don't need to decide that right now.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely, get back to me. I have, I don't have cards yet, which is fantastic. But I did print out my information, uh, non-English, I have my information.
Yes, yes.
So, yeah, absolutely. But, yeah, I mean, you can reach out to me and...
Yeah, and we'll probably kind of work through with Melanie as well and just try and make sure that we stay in touch.
I'm usually available Mondays and Fridays. Just try to do all my admin stuff on Mondays and Fridays. I have to go out to Mallory County, Mal, Malville.
Mallory.
Malheur.
Mall, Mallory.
It's like when I moved to central Oregon, I said Madras, Madras. And so I got all that, all that. And so, I, then again, I was born and kind of followed my, felt it from the first time in my life, so. But, but yeah, I mean, so anybody who needs to get out, you know, reach out to me, has questions, I'll do whatever I can to answer the questions. I won't answer questions I don't know the answer to, but I'll do my best to provide you with information. Also, there, like I said, there's that Rome tool in, in, that I talked about, that there's a packet for. And if you're interested in looking at some more of this data, go to the census website. There is so much information in there. And, you know, businesses use it to figure out, oh, where should we put this McDonald's, you know, or... And, and a lot of that information is really useful. And we have a data dissemination specialist in Salem, who, if you wanted to reach out to her, she would certainly work with the county to try and, you know, give you the tools to find out some more information based on the information that we've collected about the different areas in Lake County. So, you know, I, I can provide that, I can provide her contact information to you as well, you know, at a later time, if, if that's something you're interested in. Anything else? Thank you very much. Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
All right, with that, I believe the time is one fifteen. We will adjourn the meeting.